We'll call the September 8, 2021 City Council Meeting to Order. We have Commissioner Banksen going to give us the pledge prayer and the fact of the day.
Heavenly Father, we come before you and we're grateful to have one another and to have you during this time, the season that we're all walking through. We ask you to continue to give us your grace and your favor. Lord, we ask for this meeting that we have wisdom as we make decisions that affect so many lives and that it would be the best for all. And we give you praise and honor this day in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, fact of the day. On September 7, 1813, the United States got its nickname Uncle Sam. The name is linked to Samuel Wilson, a meat packer from Troy, New York, who supplied barrels of beef to the United States Army during the War of 1812. Wilson stamped the barrels with U.S. for United States, but soldiers began referring to the food as Uncle Sam's. A local newspaper ran the story, and eventually the term Uncle Sam became associated with the U.S. federal government. The personification of Uncle Sam in a beard with a patriotic suit of Stars and Stripes was done by cartoonist Thomas Nast as well as artist James Montgomery Flag. In September 1961, the U.S. Congress recognized Samuel Wilson as the progenitor of America's national symbol of Uncle Sam. Wilson died at the age of 87 in 1857 and was buried next to his wife, Betsy Mann, in the Oakwood Cemetery in Troy, New York, the town that calls itself the home of Uncle Sam.
Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Yes?
I have one correction.
Sure.
On page 14, they have me as voting yes, and I was not present.
Okay.
Yeah, just that was the only one.
Sure. Nope. Good.
What page was that that I had told you? It was page 14.
14.
Yeah, that was it.
Okay. So with that correction, motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, we've got a proclamation. Unfortunately, we were hoping to have the gentleman here, Harvey Caldwell, but health conditions between he and his wife, and last two months, we've tried to get him here, both, I guess, in their 90s. And so anyway, we weren't able to get him here, but we thought with this, we'd like to go ahead at least, he'll be hopefully watching the YouTube video. And Francina Boykin from the Historical Society is here to kind of, maybe you want to give some color after we get done with the proclamation, kind of talk a little bit about Mr. Harvey. That would be great. So the proclamation reads, whereas Harvey Caldwell moved from Nettleton, Mississippi in the early 1920s with his mother, father, and two brothers to Apopka, Florida, as Mr. Caldwell grew up, there were many notable events in his life, including the times he was able to run the training course with military personnel at Edwards Field and played fast pitch softball for Denmark Sporting Goods team from Orlando. And whereas Harvey was recording throwing fastballs at over 100 miles an hour with the fastest pitch being 107, Harvey was the youngest Class A pro fast pitch softball player at just 16 years of age. He even had the ability to play against Eddie "The King" Ferner, who was considered the greatest fast pitch softball player of all time. Harvey also played alongside the likes of Ollie Barker and even pitched against Herb Dudley, the pitcher for the Cleveland Clearwater Bombers. Harvey once beat the king of the court at Edwards Field in Apopka, Florida. And whereas after playing fast pitch softball for nearly 20 years, Mr. Caldwell retired, Harvey continued his love of the sport by coaching female fast pitch softball at Colonial, West Orange, and Apopka High Schools. Later, he coached at Lake Sumter Community College for four years before retiring. And whereas Harvey was very active in the Apopka community, he donated the land to the Apopka Methodist Church. He helped to sell over $7,000 worth of Jack Christmas Books: Tale of the Big Potato. Harvey also spent many years volunteering with the Apopka Historical Society. And whereas the Apopka Historical Society held a reception in Harvey's honor on Wednesday, July 7, 11:30 a.m., at the museum, now therefore I, Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 8, to be Harvey Caldwell Day. And with that, Francina? Francina, come on forward. Francina did a lot, put a lot of work in this, and it was just unfortunate that we weren't able to get him down here, but I know she's got some things she wanted to highlight about his life.
Good afternoon, everyone, Mayor and Commissioners. On behalf of the Apopka Historical Society, I graciously accept this proclamation for the Honorable Harvey Caldwell and the great contributions that he has made and the legacy that he leaves, you know, with this city and being the, his involvement during the World War, during World War II, wherein, right across the street from where he lived at Edwards Field, he was able to observe the troops, practice, and also he was, he would run along with the troops when they were doing their exercises. His mother so graciously prepared meals for many of the troops and became affectionately known as Mama Caldwell to the troops at Edwards Field. There is a marker in the Kitlein Park that recognizes the tower that was located at Edwards Field. It was donated a few years back, and at that time Harvey was able to share in giving us the history on that. So I won't prolong it, but he's well deserved, the honor bestowed upon him, and we appreciate all that he has done with the Apopka Historical Society. He is one of our treasures, and there are many, many more. Our history here in Apopka and the contributions many people like Mr. Caldwell has made is so honorable and we shall never forget. Thank you.
While we come down, we'll get a picture with Francina. We have Dr. Jackson here with the Apopka Youth Works presentation.
This past summer marked our seventh summer working with Career Source to provide summer employment for our youth here in Apopka. Today, we have Brittany Antunes and Jason Leeds from Career Source, and they just want to share regarding their experiences.
Good afternoon. My name is Brittany.
Pull your, pull your mic down. There you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Brittany Antunes, and I participated in the Apopka Youth Works this past summer, interning at the City of Apopka for the Building Department and the Finance Department. I want to start off saying that I am thankful for the opportunity given to me. I enjoyed my time interning with the City of Apopka and was able to gain a lot of experience from it. Throughout this internship, I was able to gain professional work experience in an office environment. I was also able to come out of my shell and develop a stronger personality. I also got the opportunity to meet other interns working with the City of Apopka, who I now consider my friends. I want to say thank you again for the opportunity and to those who I worked with this past summer. Thank you.
Okay, wait a minute. What, do the federal government, do they have to balance their budget?
No.
What about the city government?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds like a very important lesson was learned there. You can only hope that our summer program allows some understanding of all those things. So, thank you guys, thank you everyone for allowing me to be here, Commissioners. I really appreciate the opportunity. As Dr. Jackson was saying, this is our seventh year, and we are incredibly grateful for the continued participation. We love making an impact, and the impact that we made in the Apopka area is just really, really phenomenal. When you look at our history, this year marked the occasion where we topped $1.5 million worth of investments into the City of Apopka in general. So that's obviously the course of the full seven-year program that we did, and that's reflecting more than 700 students that we've served during those seven years. So that's really, really amazing. This year, we really were hoping we were going to get back to, you know, regular business as planned. We kind of had to do a little makeshift program last year, which we were able to make a really great impact. But this year, we were kind of faced with the same dilemma. The one thing I will share was what was really interesting is that because the economy and the way that it rebounded, what we were offering, we had a lot of the students that wanted to participate in our program initially end up respectfully backing out of the program because they found employment on their own. So they didn't need the program to assist them, and, you know, while we would love to see those numbers, we're really proud of, that is an accomplishment, to make sure that the businesses had the supply of talent that they need to be successful and make sure that they're still profitable. This year, we had 127 students participate with us, and just as a refresher, we offer three tracks during the summer. We offer an Experience, which is the internship that most everyone's familiar with, but we also offer an Accelerate and an Explore Program. The Explore Program is the only one we open to 15-year-olds, so we get a lot of participation with that, which is great. We did offer a virtual and traditional opportunity. And then for our Accelerate, we had students that participated in computer coding, hospitality, construction, and robotics, and it was the first year we ever offered a robotics course. So that was really, really exciting. The wages that we were able to provide for the students in the internships program topped over $100,000 that we wrote, invest in their pockets, which we know interns going to invest back in the Apopka economy as they're preparing for school, as they're, you know, helping their family out or just enjoying the money that they've earned. One of the things that I wanted to point out, just because it's always something really interesting, is this year, we kind of bounced back from last year. You know, typically, we have somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 to 30 businesses participate with us. This year, we were able to bounce back from last year, and we had 31 businesses participate with us, and a third of them were new, which is really, really encouraging for us because that leads us to believe as we move into next year, we have a very solid foundation for the ones that are new and experienced, but then also the ones that weren't able to because of their own COVID protocols. So we have a very solid foundation to offer many more opportunities, and that's one of the things that we're really looking forward to, is being able to offer that in-person job fair that we weren't able to do this. Well, we actually did one specifically for Apopka, which was the only one that we did across the entire region, and then we complemented that with a virtual one. So that was how we were trying to make connections with businesses and the students together. The last thing I'll lead you with is just some of the survey results. So we survey all the students at the conclusion of the program in all three of the tracks, and it's really remarkable because the responses we get back are very, very similar to each other. But we had 94% of the students that participated in the program indicate that they would recommend the program to one of their peers. So that really helps us with word of mouth and make sure that we have that continued investment from them into the program. 90% of the students that participated said that the program either met or exceeded their expectations. You know, from a younger demographic, you never know what you're going to get when you throw a question out there like that. So I was really, really impressed with that, with that response. And then 95% of the students rated the program either good or excellent. So we are really, really pleased to be able to see that and be able to continue to provide this program. And then before I left, I brought this big box so I wouldn't forget. But as a thank you, we asked the students to help us develop a piece for you guys just in recognition. So it may not look like much, but this was actually done by all of our students, or not by all of our students, but by a select group of students that are involved in our program. And this is our Talent Pipeline Award, and this is just for the investment, so we're presenting it to you all just to say thank you, but then we also send this to one of all of our business partners that have participated. So if you happen to go around and see this in anybody's office, know that they're one of the ones that helped invest in the wonderful program that you guys are able to help us with, so.
That's awesome. Any comments, questions?
I actually did see that in the city clerk's office, so I want to recognize the city clerk's office because she actually had an intern, and that helped her out immensely.
Excellent. We love to hear that, and we were very proud, we were very proud to have the chamber on board with us again this year, so that was great for them to have an intern as well.
Yeah, just a great program, and we got our T-shirts as well, so thank you for that. They're boosters, but just love to see that continue as we go forward and just be more effective.
We know that an investment in our youth at this age is a great investment, so if
We have the Youth Fire and Police Camp recap.
we continue this program in years to come, we look to receive the dividends from our investment.
The benefit of speaking lasts, as everybody's already said all the great things and kudos, but, you know, congratulations to you and everybody involved with it, Dr. Jackson and
I guess we got Lieutenant Maynard and Officer Wiggins gonna present, but let me kind of
the interns that participate in that program.
give you a little background.
It's, it's a great one, and it really sets Apopka apart, so, thank you.
We, we've always had a fire camp and a police camp, and they've always been very successful While we get a picture, while we get the little award, we can... and have sold out in not, not days, but hours.
I saw it in Susan's office.
And so this year, you know, because of COVID and kids being pinned up at house, their house, I said, I went to both Wiggins and Maynard, said, hey, guys, can we double the number of kids? And they, ugh! But they, they figured out a way to do it, and I can tell you that there, you know, a lot of kids that were extremely happy that you were able to get them in the program and get them out there and hustling around and really, and seeing what you guys do for a living. And so it was, I appreciate you, you know, going out of your way to double the camp so that more kids got to see what you're, what you're all about and to get them out of their parents' hair when they needed a little bit of, a little bit of room.
I think it sounded harder the way you explained it, but I think we filled up probably within 45 minutes. I mean, really even doubling the sizes of it, you know, adding to it, so it just, it sells out. It's very popular, high in demand, so it's easy for us to do that. And we do appreciate you guys allowing us to double up because it is rewarding for us as well.
Yeah, for sure. We were able to host six, six camps for eight weeks and have over 300 families in the city be involved in the camps, so we were able to see a lot of kids come through. Also, we actually get a good benefit. We actually see some of these kids that are actually firefighters now that work with us, so there's a good return on that as well for us, so.
That's awesome.
So I'm sure you guys have seen some of the posts that we did over, over the past couple of months, and then there was a longer video, so obviously we had to condense that. So that's what we're going to show you. It's just a recap, but a shorter version of the longer video.
Any questions?
No, I mean, thank you so much for doing it. All three of my girls participated in some of that. I think they've participated every year that, they've been eligible to go to it, but to the marriage point, I mean, I'm, I'm on my phone at 8 o'clock in the morning. This year, we had to divide and conquer, so Kelly's on her phone, I'm on my phone, and try and get these, the girls registered for the camp because it is so popular, but they have, they have a great time. It's a highlight of their summer, so thanks for all that you do.
Just want to kind of say that, how proud I am of that, the fact that you do this because we're cultivating a generation to see what, you know, law enforcement and firefighters do every day, and they have so much respect for you, so it's a good thing. And I remember going to the Gilliam Center and seeing the young people climb the tower, and it's so funny because that was something I would never do, even when I was a police officer, climbing fire escapes, and that was not for me, but it was fun watching them. And certainly, you know, as, as a former law enforcement, I really appreciate everything that goes on in Apopka, especially helping these kids to see what we really do when we're out there on patrol and going to emergency calls, so thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. What is the age range for the kids that participate?
We go from elementary school, middle school, and we do a high school camp as well. So the high school camp is two weeks long. Every other camp is one week.
And especially for the high schoolers, is there a certificate that actually helps them as they pursue that career? Is that a benefit to them to say, hey, I've been through this program, not just here, because you all know them, but anywhere they might go? Is that something that, or is it just an experience that helps?
Just the experience, really scratching the surface is what we like to describe it as, scratching the surface of what you are going to encounter being a first responder. And then, I would say, we do physical training in the morning, so some of them, it is an eye-opener for them. Like, this is really, truly just scratching the surface with that when you go to a police academy or a fire academy, so. It's a big eye-opener in some because they're used to playing the Xbox a little too much.
Yeah, I think it's tremendous.
Mr. Smith?
Undoubtedly, it is a great experience for the students to get them out of the house and off the little electronic devices, but also gives them an opportunity to see if this is a career that they would really like to go into at an early age. And I was fortunate to have an opportunity to participate in the fire one down at the tower and was able to go into the burning building and also get a chance to use the fire hose. So it's a great experience for the kids as well. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. All right, next up, Chief McKinley got a presentation, recognition for Officer Campbell.
That's, that's, that's some big hardware there, man.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for giving me a few moments to recognize Officer Robert Campbell. Officer Campbell has been selected by the Florida Law Enforcement Traffic Safety Challenge Organization as the 2020 Drug Recognition Expert of the Year, commonly referred to as a DRE expert in law enforcement. The Florida Law Enforcement Traffic Safety Challenge recognizes the best overall traffic safety programs in Florida. The following are some of the reasons the organization selected Officer Campbell as the 2020 DRE of the year. Officer Campbell became certified as a drug recognition expert in 2016. Since then, he has recertified twice and is now a certified DRE instructor for the state of Florida. Additionally, Officer Campbell does not hesitate to help officers in the field with drug-related DUI stops, teaching them about indicators of impairment that they missed to help solidify their case. Officer Campbell also is often called upon by other drug recognition experts to roundtable their observations to discuss possible causations. More notably, Officer Campbell has been used, has used his knowledge as a drug recognition expert to create a presentation for the Florida create a presentation for the Florida Attorney General's Office School Resource Officer Program. Through this presentation, Officer Campbell taught the attending SROs from throughout the state of Florida the signs and symptoms of drug consumption as recognized by drug recognition experts to help the SROs properly recognize drug usage on their respective campuses. Officer Campbell is truly dedicated to the DRE program and is very deserving of this award, and it's my pleasure to recognize him as the 2020 Drug Recognition Officer of the Year.
Really, I would just like to thank the city and the police department. I wanted to become a drug recognition expert for most of my career. Under past administrations, I wasn't able to, so I really have to thank Chief McKinley for, when he came in, to really allowing us to go after our dreams and aspirations in law enforcement because, under his administration, I was able to attend this course. For those who don't know what drug recognition experts are, it's pretty much one of the highest level of education and training an officer can receive in DUI enforcement. As a DRE, I can conduct an evaluation and determine if a person is impaired, and if they are impaired, what drug category they're under the influence of, which really helps the prosecutor's office to prosecute the cases for DUI impairment when it comes to drug-influenced DUIs. So again, I want to thank you for the opportunity that I've been able to have to become a DRE under the city of Apopka, so I appreciate it. All right. Let's get a picture. Let's get a picture. All right, next up, we've got our 2022 legislative preview, and we have with us today Representative Keith Truenow. Camia Brown had a last-minute excuse and just couldn't make it. She apologizes and will maybe make it up at a later date. But anyway, with us, Representative Keith Truenow.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners, for having me here today. I want to thank also my help, the people that get it done, and Eric Raimundo and Eileen Guy. Also want to thank you guys for hosting us once a week, as many times as we can come on Tuesdays. It's been a pleasure. I know that it makes a difference for folks that are from this area to have a place to come and, you know, have a voice and sit down and be in person. So that helps a lot. So we've been pretty busy this summer, a lot of cases that have come across our phone lines, emails, et cetera, that we've been working on, and we don't leave any stone unturned. We stay diligent and try to help as best we can, at least point them in the right direction to get what they need serviced. I've been pretty busy on a lot of different issues myself with water quality, some things we were able to do this last session with the city of Apopka and this in the county. But looking forward, I think there's a lot of work to be done. The CARES Act money, there's some money that's coming down line that could be possibly helpful, and we need to have a further discussion about. With flood control, there's some federal dollars that could be utilized through a grant appropriation that could be helpful coming forward. And I actually have a meeting tomorrow with the city manager of Taverri's on another flood issue. So I'll learn more and I'll share it with you guys. Some other things that we worked on this year was the trail system, and, you know, it's getting closer to connecting Seminole, Orange, and Lake County. Looking forward to making that connection. We're, the Lake County piece was finished a week ago, a little ribbon cutting, so it was pretty exciting. Looking forward to making the connection with the three counties together will be a great network and hopefully, you know, adds a lot of infrastructure and, you know, people utilizing it and bringing new folks to the area. And a couple of things on a business side of things, looking forward, this year is going to be tough. Looking at some insurance issues, I don't know if many of you are in business, but my insurance has gone up for me personally on my business, about 40% on commercial liability, which is a huge issue moving forward. So as we do business in the state of Florida, we got to figure out how to manage through those things. That's something that's going to be high on the radar for me. Things I've been working on this summer is vocational education, looking at ideas and ways to bring more of the same thing you just heard from a few minutes ago. Working, we have, UF Health has moved into Lake County. They're coming to the table with a program to promote some career opportunities, which would be helpful with ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th graders, which are very important. And I've met with some other vocational education folks, working on an ag program through a charter school. But I want to continue the vocational education component because I feel it's a great, great thing that we need to expand on. And all of you know, committee weeks are starting real soon, right? A couple of weeks. I've been fortunate to have the same committee assignment as last year, which was, to me, was back to the roots of who we are here in central Florida. Early learning, a great committee, pre-K through 12 appropriations, civil justice and property rights, the full judiciary committee, ag and environmental, flooding, and JALAC. So all of those are going to be probably pretty busy this year. Looks like we're starting earlier than normal. First committee day is on a Monday, so I think that it's going to be, it's going to yield a lot of things. I think that we have a good environmental thought process moving forward. I think we're going to have a great session. Last year was good, but I think this year will be even better. I mean, as a freshman, I got to learn who and what other representatives brought to the table and then what I bring to the table for them. So I think all in all, it's going to be a great session. I'm looking forward to it. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
I just want to thank your assistant, Eileen. She was here every Tuesday, and I'll tell you the truth, we had gotten, I had gotten personally emails and requests regarding the unemployment and just other problems. And the only one I can really go to was Eileen. And sometimes, some of the people who reached out to me didn't live in Apopka. They lived in Apopka on the Seminole side, or they either lived in Apopka on the Lakeside. But she was more than helpful. She found who would have been their representative, and she said, don't worry, I'll get this to them. So almost every Tuesday, I came in with my list, and she was just so helpful, and I just want to say thank you to her. She even helped me with my daughter-in-law with unemployment, and my daughter-in-law's in South Florida, and she gave me the information that she needed. So I just want to say thank you to her, and you have a great assistant in her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Eileen and I were talking about the unemployment cases that they had at the state level, and they were, I don't know, in the 20,000 range, right?
The ones that came from our offices to DVO for representatives was over 32,000. They had, and they had backlogs and we put our people on them. They finished 13,000 last week, so in two weeks, they should be caught up.
Wow.
But from our district, you only had, what, 25 in the queue?
Yeah, 25 or 30, yeah.
Plus the ones that I gave her.
Well, I think they may have been settled, but in the queue right now, she only has a few that haven't been settled or they're ongoing, right? So if you look at that number, and whereas 120 representatives, we're doing our part to make sure that we help.
She did, because it's very complicated, and you just don't understand the process, but she had access to things that we don't, and so that was very helpful. I mean, I had two people that were unemployed for months, and they hadn't heard anything, and she was able to resolve that, especially for one gentleman that was out of work, didn't have any money coming in, and it was important to him.
Right.
Yeah, just some tremendous areas, water quality, obviously, CARES Act money, federal grant money. Knowing that you're on the cutting edge of that and that you're an advocate here that when we have those needs, that we can, that it's already started and not something we're just starting the process is great. But Mayor's really perked up with the vocational education. And right now, of course, with some of what I enjoy in the aviation field, there's a tremendous opportunity right now, a tremendous need on the ground. There's a lot of people that they like it as long as they don't have to get in the plane and go up. But there's a lot of opportunity there, both with aviation, with drone technology, drone pilotage, which is very useful in business, and of course, just new technology emerging like that. So anything along those vocational, educational opportunities that we can work hand in hand and kind of link everything together, I think for Apopka, we're in a tremendous position. And we're transitional because we were the foliage capital of the world, and of course, all of that has begun to transition. So who are we in the future and going ahead? And I think there's real opportunity there to corner the market, as it were, and so just excited for the work that you're doing.
Absolutely. I look forward to working on those diligently, so.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, and we appreciate you being here with us today. And of course, water quality is number one for us here in the city of Apopka and the flooding as well, so we're looking forward to what's going to be able to come down the pipe to assist us in those areas as well. And being a former vocational education teacher for 40 years, that's where my heart is, and so I'm glad to hear that because most times, people thought that was a dirty word, but now they're realizing that those people are necessary and that they're very vital to our existence. And so looking forward to whatever comes down the pipe to make that more of a reality and bring the good things forward so people understand that it is important that we continue the vocational education in our community.
Absolutely.
Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Representative. Great presentation. Yeah, not to repeat some of the stuff that's already been said, but my big thing, and we're coming off the heels of the Florida League of Cities Conference, right? That's always hot and heavy with home rule, preemption, things like that. And I'll throw COVID kind of to the side, but just normal part and parcel bill, creation of bills, you know, our interest is to make sure that we, as a local municipality, have as much, I'm not going to call it power, but the ability to influence our own policy to make sure that what's right for Apopka stays here in Apopka. And so I would just ask that you continue to advocate for that, for that idea, because I think we've seen some bills that have passed through lately that have kind of lifted that home rule power away from the city specifically. And I would just hope that you could advocate on our behalf to make sure that we continue to have as much of that policymaking decision here, right here in Apopka.
Absolutely. I mean, all the things that we've tried to do, in my opinion, too, I mean, it's got to be fair and balanced. I mean, there are things that need to be tweaked from time to time, but I think for the right reasons, I mean, there was a few bills that were a little bit on the edge, but if you look at them hard, you know, in the end, they'll be good policy. So yes, I agree with you.
Yeah, and naturally, there's things that you want controlled at the state level. You don't want 412 different municipalities having major policy changes if you go from one city to the next. But where possible, we would want to thank for that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, I've got a bill running this session to change the way the Lake County Water Authority is, right? They're an independent special district currently, and we're going to put them under a dependent district under the Board of County Commission, right? So again, not taking away from home rule, giving it to the Board of County, taking away from the legislature, basically, giving it to the BCC so they can run it as they need to, and then they can adjust the program or do away with it completely. But I understand exactly where you're coming from.
Representative, far as budget, have you got any budget numbers? Where do you think our budget will be for next year?
From the budget office, they say that we're in good shape.
Okay.
So we're strong as far as the budget goes this year. Nothing that has been told to me is alarming at all.
Okay.
They're taking it in.
Great. Well, thank you, Representative Truenow, and thank you for what you do and coming to Apopka every Tuesday. It's been a real pleasure to have you here, and I know you get a lot of constituents come in, you know, that wouldn't probably travel to Lake County to your other office, and so we appreciate what you do for us here in Apopka. Thank you.
And I look forward to coming to the presentation on Saturday.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be exciting.
Yes, yep.
Appreciate the opportunity to be with you guys.
You got it. Thank you.
Thanks again.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, Edward, agenda review?
Yeah, we have two items, two changes, Mayor. Under public hearing, item three, the applicant and staff has asked to postpone this to a date certain of October 6, 2021, due to the plan development agreement being incorporated into the agenda. They want to be able to go through and put the plan development agreement into the agenda item, so we're just going to have to put them together. So we're gonna, they've asked to postpone that item until a date certain of October 6, 2021, when you get to that item. And then the other clarification is, there was an advertisement that was done for the Public Safety Tower, the relocation of the Public Safety Tower. That item is not going to be brought up. It'll be to a, we're not sure which meeting, but that will come in a future meeting. But I wanted to make that clear, there will be no discussion on that because that item is not on the agenda, but it was advertised, so it will be to a future date.
Thank you, Edward. All right, Susan.
Okay, we have one. Cam, over, please.
Sure.
Hi, I just wanted to let you know, I've been here before. I'm a resident of Sheiller Oaks and want to let you know that five inlets have been successfully installed there as part of the Sheiller Oaks Drainage Improvement Project. Mr. Bass has been keeping us informed of the project. Mr. Earp's been out there several times, and I understand Mayor Nelson's been out there. My main concern is that we've been told that the project has been kind of put on a whole basis, and I want to get clarification on that because there's supposed to be four more inlets put on Mill Run Circle, and Phase Two was supposed to be on Larkspur and Crossfield. And Mrs. Arabella Walker and I were both told on separate occasions that there's going to be a wait and see to see if these first five inlets are going to be successful in keeping the floodwaters at bay before the other ones are put in. And then I heard about the meeting today, and I thought I'd come down when everybody was together and find out if that was the case or if the project's going to proceed as it was approved and voted on. So that's kind of where my concerns are, is because all the equipment's gone, we haven't seen any workers since last week, so I don't know where we stand.
Yeah, let me try to bring you up to speed. You know, when we went to, we did it as an emergency, you know, funding, and so when we did that, we went to market. As you know, their materials are in short supply in all, you know, all areas. And Providence, who is the general contractor for us, was able to find some stormwater inlets that weren't built for your neighborhood, but they would do, and we're going to have to, matter of fact, I don't think they've been poured yet. We have to pour the bottom of the box so it doesn't have standing water in it. So they were able to find some that we were able to make do to get you, at least, you know, in the heat of this hurricane season, get your street and your area with those five baffle boxes that were found, you know, on different yards. So we've got to go, we have to, we've got to order now more boxes, and they would be, you know, we don't know how many weeks it'll take to get those delivered. But just to give you kind of where we're at, you know, we you kind of a where we're at, you know, we funded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Sheiler Oaks fix, and to date, for the five boxes that we put in, we spent, and this is as of today, so I guess everything that's been completed is a hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Okay.
Okay? So, and then we did get a quote, and the only thing we've done different, there's been some questions about that we've changed the scope, and the only thing we've done different, we added a major pipe, I can't, I want to say it's forty-eight inches.
Yes, I know about that one.
And that was, yeah, that was, you know, my, one of my guys that worked out at the Public Services Department, and I were kind of looking at the pipe that's, that goes from your neighborhood into the lake is, even at seventy-seven feet, which is two feet below where we can start to take water out of the pond, it's already completely submerged. So what we thought is by putting an additional pipe above that one, that it would have better free flow from the pipes coming out of your neighborhood into the lake, even at a higher elevation. So we thought for a little bit of money, I mean, probably, I don't know, ten thousand dollars, that's what we added that, so we did add that to make what we think is a, is a good, good faith effort, because it seems like the only problems you're having is a major, you know, two-inch rain in thirty minutes or an hour, so what's happened is the whole thing is bottling, bottlenecking into that pipe, so we just, by adding that extra pipe, we think we'll get a lot better free flow water from the neighborhood into the lake.
And I think that was his only concern, too, when I spoke to the project coordinator, was that even when they were having the water coming down from where they eventually do the Larkspur and Crossfield, comes down the street, they still have it coming, making the turn into the inlet, the same, that same inlet.
Right.
And his only thought was that they should really continue straight down to the lake and have it enter at a different, at an independent inlet, that was his only concern, too, instead of having all the water come into the one inlet.
I would agree with that, but that's not what our engineer, that we paid, I don't know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars to tell us.
So.
So the only thing we've done, which is not outside the scope of what he gave us, is that extra pipe from the street, your street, down to the lake.
So what you're saying now is that everything's still on track to go, it's just been being delayed?
By pipes and, and yeah, well, and I can tell you, if we're at a hundred and eleven thousand dollars, there's no way, we'd have to come back for more money, because if we're only got five of the fourteen inlets in, we won't make it for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Because originally, they had quoted a hundred and seventy-nine thousand for the project.
Well, I'm just telling you what I've got, here's the invoice. I mean, they've run into some problems with Spectrum, we've, I mean, we've run into problems we never, never thought we would have, so.
So does this, does Spectrum's project impact our budget? I mean, since it's there?
Well, it delayed us, we had Duke Energy, we had to move a pole, and we've had some delays that obviously put us, put us back, and it's, you know, we've run into some problems that it's cost more than we thought it would.
So we're at a hundred and eleven thousand, we have two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask you real quick, because I'm, I'm going to make sure that I'm following. So we had the engineering report, it suggested the amount of inlets that we approved previously for the two hundred and fifty K emergency funding, correct? But scarcity of resources has led us to only be able to install five boxes up to this point, but the wait and see is not wait and see in terms of whether or not the full scope of that work will be executed, rather, it's a wait and see until we can actually get the supplies because of the scarcity of that resource? Am I following that?
Other than we will have to come back for additional dollars if we want to do.
It's just a funding mechanism, not a scope of work mechanism?
Correct.
Okay.
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 Because that wasn't what we were kind of told, it was like, wait and see if we, we were told kind of was, let's wait and see how the, when the rains come, if this is enough to handle what was coming, and then Mrs. Eravella Walker was told that her project was going to be, you know, was kind of indefinitely put on hold until we saw what was going to happen, so she went into a panic, of course, and she was working today, so she couldn't come in to ask, so. So I will let her know that she needn't panic, it's just a matter of time, because ideally, her side, her part was supposed to have been started by now, but I understand all the difficulties that have been going on because of materials and labor and COVID and all that, so. But I just wanted to figure it was best to come here and just talk to everyone at once, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Seems to be doing, moving along, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I add one comment, too, real quick?
Sure.
And Pam, this will be for you and the citizens as well. As we move through this project, you know, Mayor was talking about Spectrum, Duke, and I know there's some sprinkler system issues that we've had with some of the citizens and plants, landscaping or whatever, but rest assured, and I've made this clear to the citizens, we will put back everything the way, anything that's damaged or broken, we'll put that back, so I'll try to keep you in the, you know, stay with you on that so we can make sure those are done.
Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Okay. Next up, consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of the items off the consent, the seven items? If not, look for a motion to approve the seven items on consent. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, business item, Jean Sanchez.
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to approve the crossroads four twenty-nine industrial park major development plan. The property is located at twenty-eight hundred General Electric Road west of King Street and north of Peterson Road. The aerial shows that the project is west of Lake Heinegger State's residential subdivision and east of State Road four twenty-nine. The crossroads four twenty-nine industrial park major development plan proposes the development of an industrial park with two buildings, building one hundred and building two hundred, including vehicle and trailer parking on approximately fifty acres. Building one hundred comprises of eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two square feet of warehouse storage area and nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six square feet of office area. Building two hundred consists of a hundred and sixty-five, sixty-three thousand approximately square feet of warehouse storage area and about eighteen thousand square feet of office area. While the required parking for building one hundred is fifty-five spaces, the applicant is proposing sixty-four parking spaces with four accessible spaces. The required parking spaces for building two hundred is ninety-six, while one hundred and twenty-five spaces with six accessible spaces are provided. Maximum permitted height of the buildings is forty-five feet. This development will have one full access connection on King Street and three full access connections on Peterson Road. The center access on Peterson Road will line up with Grand Avian Parkway. Applicant proposes live oaks, winged elms, bald cypress trees, crepe myrtles, and sable palms within the development. The DRC and Planning Commission recommend approval. The recommended motion is to approve the crossroads four twenty-nine industrial park major development plan. Staff is available for questions.
Okay. Any questions for Jean?
Did staff had any question, or concerns about noise abatement, things like that, as it relates to the location of this and the neighborhood directly to the east? Because the, I would assume that the ingress, ingress, egress for those semis that are going to be parked there are directly across from a residential area, so what's, what's
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Jean just said, yeah, this did come up at Planning Commission, too. They are doing a enhanced buffering on that eastern side of the, of the property itself. We can't do anything on the street itself, but as soon as they turn into and as they're exiting on that eastern side coming up King Street, we did have the buffering enhanced, so, and we've got another project on the north side, same type of thing.
And will there be, will there be any hour restrictions? I'm just asking these in case they get asked by public.
We haven't placed any hour restriction on those. We haven't done that on any of the industrial projects that we've got.
Well, I get that, but some of the other industrials aren't necessarily right next to a established neighborhood either, so. What is the plan for, is there going to be a twenty-four operate, twenty-four hour operation out there?
I don't have any information on that from the applicant. Is the applicant here?
The applicant planned to be here, but mistakenly took a late flight, so he is hoping to be here in the next few minutes.
Does, do we know if he's got tenants yet for the buildings?
Don't know yet. If you'd like to, as Jean had mentioned, the applicant did send an email, he said he was going to try and get here between two, two and two-thirty, something, somewhere around this. If we wanted to postpone the vote on this one so you could ask those questions, or any other specific questions, we could bring that back after some others.
Do you like to do that?
I think might be worth it to delay it.
Okay. All right. We'll just temporarily postpone it.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Next up, public hearing ordinance number twenty-eight forty-two.
Ordinance number twenty-eight forty-two. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city mixed use for certain real property generally located north of Kelly Park Road and east of Downman Drive, owned by Lee Lee Koon, Lee Ming Jay, Nam Ky Yon, and Lee Jong Dam Nam, comprising thirty point nineteen acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Bobby, no changes? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt.
Look, I just, I just have one comment on this one. I had spoken to Ed Bass because one of the residents on Downman Drive had concerns about, if you remember in the past, about vacating that section on Downman Drive, and she had concerns because the county vacated, and her expectations were that we were going to vacate, but we withdrew, and it's strictly just the county. Am I correct in saying that?
Bobby, you'll take.
Because she may be tuning in because of this, so I just want to clarify it for her.
Yeah, the vacation's being handled through Orange County. We don't, we had an objection.
Right.
The Public Works Department had an objection, they received more information and withdrew that objection.
Okay, so the city withdrew, and so the county's the only one that would give her the permission to, you know, vacate that property?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Any questions?
And we're still not going to go out and have an exit on the Downman Drive, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
And the only one I had, just a confirmation of our code, I saw the concept that they were showing the residents, so you got that thirty-foot right-of-way that was just discussed by Commissioner Velazquez, and then a twenty-foot buffer beyond that, and that's per code from my review of it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody here to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number two, twenty-eight forty-two.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight forty-three.
Ordinance number twenty-eight forty-three. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from residential medium, commercial, and future land use in progress to mixed use for certain real property generally located north of State Road four fourteen, east of Marden Road, and west of Hawthorne Avenue, owned by Emerson Point Phase Two LLC, comprising sixty-nine point six five acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Bobby, any changes? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-eight forty-three. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Is anybody here to speak on ordinance number twenty-eight forty-nine? Because we need to still go ahead and read it.
That was the gentleman at the corner there. That was regarding the tower, right? Was that regarding the tower?
No, no, this is a different item. This isn't, this is the item.
I guess go ahead and read it there, Susan, please.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-eight forty-nine. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from residential multifamily RMF, community commercial CC, and transitional T to plan development PD for certain real property located at eighteen oh one Marden Road, eighteen ninety, and nineteen hundred South Hawthorne Avenue, comprising sixty-nine point six five acres more or less, and owned by Emerson Point Phase Two LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay. Is there anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to continue to a date certain of October sixth. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-three.
Ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-three. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to city mixed use for certain real property located north of Poncan Pines Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road, comprising eight point eight five acres more or less, and owned by CHS Management Corp., providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay. Any changes? No changes, Bobby? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-three. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-four.
Twenty-eight fifty-four. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to MUESGT, mixed use east shore gateway sub-district, for certain real property located north of Poncan Pines Road and east of Plymouth Sorento Road, comprising fifteen point eight two acres more or less, and owned by CHS Management Corp., providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? No changes? Anybody from public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll look for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-four.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-nine.
Ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-nine. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, granting the petition of Apopka Centerline Development LLC, Troy S. Bronson Family LP, Binion Partners LLC, Ruth Ina Bronson Trust, Troy S. Bronson Trust, Donna Marie Robertson Kirkland, John Kirkland, and Kelly W. Shirley, establishing and naming the Ridge at Apopka Community Development, at Apopka Community Development District pursuant to Chapter one ninety Florida statutes, describing the external boundaries, the functions and the powers of the district, designating five persons to serve as the initial members of the District Board of Supervisors, providing severability clause and an effective date.
Okay. Michael, any changes?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-eight fifty-nine.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight sixty-six.
Ordinance number twenty-eight sixty-six. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute one seven one point oh four four, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Lloyd B. Bearden, located south of Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lake Doe Boulevard, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Bobby, any changes? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-eight sixty-six. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number twenty-eight sixty-seven.
Ordinance number twenty-eight sixty-seven. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty-seven eighty- amending ordinance number 2780, which is known as the Rue Bright Planned Development PD, generally located west of North Orange Blossom Trail, north of Hogshead Road, and west of Orlando Apopka Airport, comprising 424.46 acres more or less, owned by Alterna Mortgage Fund LLC, Cypress Business Park LLC, and American Land Apopka Industrial LLC, and Exeter Wesley Land LLC, providing for directions to the community development director, severability, conflicts, and effective date.
Bobby?
Thank you. Good afternoon. Bobby Howe, Planning Manager. On August 19th, 2020, the city council approved a planned development master plan for a six-lot industrial park that's located west of North, North Orange Blossom Trail, north of Hogshead Road, and west of the Orlando Apopka Airport. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the PD to add an additional 75.08 acres to the PD from properties that are located to the south that are within the A beyond point planned development in order to increase the lots from, to seven lots and allow an increase in the total amount of square footage from 4,500,000 to 5,500,000. The master plan proposes a subdivision consisting of seven industrial lots and 424.34 acres, with lot sizes ranging in size from 2.65 to 197.28 acres. Access to the site is proposed via Wesley Road, Orange Blossom Trail, and via an access easement that's proposed to be established to the west of the Apopka, Orlando Apopka Airport. Eternal roadways and utilities will be dedicated to the public as was on the previous iteration of the PD. Infrastructure, including roads and stormwater facilities, will be constructed in one phase. The Development Review Committee recommends approval, the Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval, and the recommended motion today is to approve first reading of ordinance number 2867 and hold it over for second reading and adoption. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby?
Just, I'm sorry, it wasn't intuitive for me on the, on the lead-in packet. So the part that's being entered into this putt, is that under the same limitations as the remainder of that, that property in terms of, it's going to be all industrial?
Yes.
Because I saw on one shading the land use was a mixed use type?
Yeah, I believe it's got some mixed use.
But this, this will be limited to industrial per the rest of that putt agreement?
Exactly, per the PD.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt, approve ordinance number 2867 at first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
My second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance resolution number 2021-42.
Resolution number 2021-42. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2020, and ending September 30, 2021, providing for a budget amendment.
Good afternoon, Vladimir Ortega, Mayor and Commissioners. This is Budget Resolution 2021-42. The first one is a budget amendment that includes changes in funding and appropriations related to the purchase of Camp Weewah. City Council authorized the offer and purchase of the property located at 221 Sands Vineon Road at the regularly scheduled city council meeting held on June 16, 2021. The total purchase price is 4,720,681.68. Funding is provided by Recreation Impacts Fund and General Fund Reserves. The General Fund Reserves will be replenished by city land sale proceeds and any award grants funds. Second amendment is the amendment include changes in revenues and appropriations for the General Fund related to our fire retirement plan, being in compliance with the provisions of Chapters 175-185, in which we receive 2020 state premium tax monies for a fire pension plan in fiscal year 2021. Once these funds are received, we are required to submit them to the retirement plan as an employer contribution. This transaction is recognizing the revenue received and the associated appropriation for the contribution of 368,407. The third amendment includes changes in revenues and appropriations for the police retirement plan, being in compliance with the provisions of Chapters 175, 185, in which we receive 2020 state premium tax monies for the police pension in fiscal year 2021. These funds are received, and we are required to submit them to the retirement plan as an employer contribution. This transaction is recognizing the revenue received and the associated appropriation for the contribution of 523,892. The last one, it's changes in revenues and appropriations for the General Fund related to the CARES Act Provider Relief Funds Release Grant. These funds were received on April 2020, and this transaction is recognizing the revenue received and allocating the expense towards the purchase of ultraviolet lighting equipment for disinfecting and sanitation of our offices. Any question relating to these purchases? I'm ready for answering questions.
Any questions for Vladimir? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-42.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2021-43.
Resolution number 2021-43. A resolution of the city council of the city of Apopka, Florida, addressing the, adjusting the non-ad valorem tax assessment role for the Cimarron Hills subdivision, providing direction to the finance director for certification and transmission of the assessment role to the Orange County Tax Collector, providing for an effective date.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. Chuck Fabrit, administration, what you have before you is a request to reduce the non-ad valorem assessment on the Cimarron Hills subdivision. This particular MSBU was created back in 2020, excuse me, 2014, for the upkeep and maintenance of the wall, the retention pond area and common area throughout the development. Based on current revenues and future revenues, staff is recommending reducing that rate because we can actually meet the future expenses, reducing the rate down. So my request is to reduce the rate. And we have notified the property owners via the trim notice, and it was advertised in the community newspaper.
Any question for Mr. Fabrit?
I just think it's wonderful that government is reducing the amount of taxes.
Yes.
I guess the only question is-
Well, it is our responsibility to, to monitor them, and, and we will come to you as we can and, and do the proper thing for the citizens.
Yeah, I'm just glad that we've been able to monitor that, like you said, and find that we are able to do that, so.
Commissioner Becker?
No, I mean, I, I think I was just going to ask a question that you already answered. I mean, it's, the operational cost is what it is at the lowered level, and we're able to sufficiently.
Yes, sir. And, and the money was put there when we initially set that up. I actually set this back in 2014, is that pond needs some maintenance work. We had an engineer come in and evaluate it this past year. He's come back with some recommendations, and based on the funds that are in the, in the fund right now and future, we can meet those expenses and reduce the rate.
Okay. All right, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve resolution number 2021-43.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, city council reports. Commissioner Becker, you want to start us?
I had something on my mind, and I completely slipped my mind.
Well, I want to say that I was able to attend the Heart and Soul Festival this past weekend. Fantastic turnout, some outstanding performances that was there. So want to give a big shout out to Mr. Paul Billings and 98.6 for an outstanding concert and look forward to some in, in the future. And also a shout out to Ms. Monique Morris, who was awarded the Heart and Soul Community Servant Award for 2021.
It was a great event. I don't think he's here yet.
This is, yeah. So what do we do with that?
Just, we can, we can keep going until.
You can continue until the meeting is over, before, prior to the meeting is over to take it up again, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to encourage everybody, of course, the 20th anniversary, unbelievably that it's been, it's gone so fast, but for 9/11 and the hard work I know that the Fire Department, Police Department have, have done. And it's just important to take times like that to remember and, and to be grateful for the sacrifices that were made. And there's several events. There's, of course, the 5K, which can do us all some good. And then a special presentation, I believe, does that start at 8:30?
8:30 is, yes.
8:30. And then there will be a time for community prayer coming together at noon at the city hall and, and flags placed for all the lives that were lost representative there, something real special there. And then, of course, the concert later on to benefit. So it's, it's a great day and a great way to commemorate that. I just encourage everybody to come out and support that.
Commissioner Velazquez?
Well, I just want to thank everyone who, who did reach out to me. I was sick with COVID. I was out for over 16 days quarantined. I'm still recovering. I'm just trying to fight through the fatigue. And just wanted to say thank you because I did get so many texts and phone calls. So thank you to everyone.
Okay, Commissioner Becker, you-
Yeah, I think, well, we, a couple of things, because Ms. Ripley, I think I was going to bring up in case it wasn't brought up, and then some of the other things we already covered. But I, I did want to say, because I wasn't able to attend the service, I was out of town on Sunday. But it just, I think we all knew him, but we just wanted to send my condolences to the Ratliff family. Mr. Britt Ratliff passed away. He was the owner of the Chick-fil-A here in town. And, you know, it's apropos that, you know, the, the Fire and the Police camp guys were doing their presentation because I know that he did a lot of food donations for those camps and did a lot for the city of Apopka. So I just wanted to extend our, our gratitude for him and condolences to the family.
All right. Edward?
So we have another month of the sales tax revenue. So this month's financial update, you can see that for August, for the month of August, we're in our 11th month for fiscal year 21. You can see that the total revenue from the sales tax, the revenue sharing and the half-cent sales tax was a little over $970,000, or 6% better than it was this time last year. You can see the overall is still about right at 5% or 5% less than what we were forecasted or the state forecasted that we would get in sales tax revenue, or a variance of about $496,000. So that variance has changed a little bit as we've moved through this fiscal year. It's still a half a million dollar short, so that is a shortfall that we will have to, to make up in this current fiscal year in FY '21. But, but we continue to monitor it. I think it's good that we continue to monitor it. We'll have one more month, and then we'll kind of see where we, we fall out for the, for the fiscal year as it comes to sales tax. But there has been some improvement in this, in this number, a little bit of improvement in this number, so.
Anything else, Edward?
That's all I have.
Any questions for Edward? Okay, thank you, sir. Michael?
No update. No, no report, actually.
No report. All right. Kelly or Rob, you got any pictures to, the Lowe's pictures? Oh, I thought we were going to, okay. No sweat. All right. Well, just, I'll start with that. Lowe's, you know, today, tomorrow, and Friday, we've got, man, we must have had, well, I can tell you how many burgers we, we, we flipped, 120 burgers, and we had about 60 hot dogs that we fed the, the Lowe's people at lunch today. So amazing turnout by Lowe's. They must have had six or eight trucks coming in with fans and mulch and lights and, and wood and, and, I mean, it was, it's amazing what they've already accomplished. They're, they're pressure washing all the roofs or getting the, like, the mold off the roofs. They're, they're already started to paint some of the buildings, doing a lot of the, the vegetational work around, you know, getting that all cleaned up. You're really going to be impressed from where we were, you know, a month ago. So we are so excited for, for the partnership that Lowe's has, has committed to us and helping us with Camp Weewah. Next up, farmer's market update. I know Propagate and Three Odd Guys have decided they want to go ahead and try to put together their own farmer's market, which is, which is great. I guess on a smaller scale, but at, at the point that they decided to do it, RTP, which is our, our farmer's market that we did at Kettland Nelson Park, just pulled out of Apopka. So they'll just kind of, you know, still on the sidelines and, you know, if something changes, they might come back. So just to let everybody know, and so it's been off, we're taking it off the, the website, and we'll, as soon as we get some dates from what Propagate and, and Three Odd Guys are putting together, we'll, we'll get that out to you. Next up, COVID, the PTO days. Edward and I were, you know, kind of, as we've gone through this last 60 to 90 days, I mean, it's been for us at the city and across all departments, a much bigger struggle with COVID. Not only employees getting COVID and having to, you know, like Commissioner Velazquez and myself, but, but not only that, but you've got, you know, family members, you know, you've got a wife and a, and a grandmother. We've got parents that have kids that can't go to school because, so a lot of reasons why people are having to take days off and use up their PTO for COVID-related incidences. And so we sat down and said, you know what, we got a, we got a great, a great team here, and, and we know that they're not going to take advantage of the city. They're going to, they're going to use their PTO where they, where they feel like it, it works, and they're not going to burden us with overtime costs, you know, on somebody else. And so what we decided to do is to give every employee at the city five extra days of, of PTO. And I can tell you, a lot of them have already, I mean, they've already burned it up. One of my, our good friends who's the, the engineer is, he's gone. He's been out 15 days, 20 days. So, I mean, he, he'd already burned up his, his PTO, but at least it gets some of these people back to a semblance of, you know, whole, if not maybe a little bit above that. So we thought it was the right thing to do. A lot of people had different, you know, ways to doing it. And, and I think this for us was just the best way to, to reward our employees who've been with us and that, you know, have had to pick up the slack when, you know, two or three people in their department have been out. And so it's, it's, it's been a challenge. And I can tell you that there was a couple, you know, weeks that, that sanitation was with, you know, one or two drivers. If had one more driver out, they probably couldn't have done our, our yard waste, you know, pickups. I mean, so it was, you know, we were really, really struggling. I know fired police and dispatch was right down to the, the nitty-gritty as well. So anyway, we, we, we thought it was the right thing to do to, 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 to support our employees and what they're, you know, what they're struggling with, as we all are, and so.
But is that, does, do those hours have to come back to us from a budget amendment perspective?
No, Commissioner, they don't, because there's no money that's going to go out. Their full salaries are budgeted, so it's just whenever they take those holidays, those PTO days, whenever they take that day, whether it's this fiscal year, because some of those that didn't need it all may have saved it. They'll be able to use it in another calendar year. So when their salaries are budgeted, they're, they're, it's covered. So it's either, it's either-
But, and you're tracking to see if there's any overtime impacts that might be triggered by PTO, additional PTO?
Yeah, we have, we can track overtime. We track in each department. We can track those numbers. It's tough to determine if the overtime was related to COVID or not, you know, in some, in some cases. And that's one of the issues we've had, is it's, it's hard tracking the COVID being the HIPAA laws and everything. It's very, very difficult to track that information and track that data on who's had COVID, whose family, what day, when, you know, who was quarantined, who wasn't quarantined, what doctor said what. So it's, it's been a very, very intense thing trying to keep track of all of that data. And then at the, and at the same time, we're trying to protect, to protect the employee by not gather, trying to, you know, have all, keep all that HIPAA information, you know, in all the different areas. So, but yeah, we'll, we can track, we, we will be able to track the overtime because each department has a budget, an overtime budget.
Most of our employees are hourly employees, right? So, so triggering five extra days of PTO per employee, there's, there's value associated to that hour of work. And so that equals a certain number, right? It's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars that that, that equals.
Right.
I'm just curious that, so you're, you all are saying that that doesn't have to come back before council for any sort of budget amendment or anything like that?
No, there would not be a budget amendment. If we had to do that, we would come back to you if it alters the budget. These are hours that are going into their leave bank, so they're going to get paid, these, their whole, their salary's budgeted, whether they get it as a vacation PTO pay or they get it as a working pay. So the, the total salary is budgeted. If the overtime was to go over the current budget appropriation that we have now, we would come back to you if the, if the overtime numbers need to, if there's not enough funding to cover the overtime hours. So.
Okay, two additional items. One that just kind of sprung up yesterday. I've got a call from Adam Lovejoy, who's the, what's his title, Government Affairs Director for the St. John's Water Management District, and they've got additional dollars available for us if we want to go back and add the distributed wastewater systems in Wee Kava Glen. We've done, you know, the, we've done 17 of them, and so we can, we can chomp off as much of that as we want. We can chomp off, let's see here, we- much of that as we want, we can chomp off, let's see here, we have up to a commitment from cost share, one, let's see, $775,000 from the state, $387,000 from the district, but with that, we would have to match to the 387.5K, that's the city's match. We could, you could, a lesser amount would be if they, $337,225 state, 112.5 district, and 112.5 cities match. So anyway, we're at a point, and we'll bring it back at the next council meeting, they just, they want, they'll need an answer, it'll be for the next fiscal year, but if we want to do some additional distributed wastewater systems in Wekava Glen, the way I think I calculated, the lower number, it would be about 47 additional systems, so we just, we were just, we did the first 17 with the understanding, we want to make sure that the technology worked, that we were getting the results that we, we were expecting, and that St. John's Water Management DEP were, were happy with what was, was happening as well, so it's, it's, we'll have the ability to go in and get some additional dollars, and just so you know, it's, the systems are $14,400, and at first, the district was gonna match at 75% of the first $10,000, but they agreed to go up to the 75% of the 14.4, so our cost for the system is 25% of the 14.4. So we can, we can pick a number, if we wanted to pick a number of, of systems we want to add additionally, obviously, there's about, I just want to say, there's around 200 homes left to go in Wekava Glen, so anyway, just something to put in the back of your, your mind, is, we'll, we'll bring it forward at the next commission meeting.
So you did 17 already?
Correct. Yes.
And what was the cost share that they said for us?
We're, we're, we paid 25% of the 14.4.
Oh, the 14.4, I guess.
And it'll be the same for the new ones?
Yes, we just, yeah, whatever we want to fund on the new ones, correct. They've got money available now, they just need to have an answer, because they don't, it won't roll over, the state money, so whatever we want to do, they're, they'll match up to that, that maximum number.
Do you have other residents that are interested?
Oh, yes, we had quite a few, it's funny, you know, the first three or four, you're having a hard time getting anybody to sign up, and then, you know, they sign up and things are going well, and then you got, you know, four or five more sign up, and so all of a sudden, it's like, yeah, we had, I want to say we had probably a 10, 10-personed or 10 homes that were, you know, on back order, so, yeah, and I think if we, and they, and we kind of shut it off fairly early, so I think, we have no problem, I don't think, fulfilling whatever number we wanted to, to replace the old septic tanks with. Okay. Okay, and last but not least, when you're talking about September 11th, I know it's been brought up, just want to make sure everybody knows exactly, the 9/11 memorial 5K run benefiting Armando Borja Scholarship Foundation will start at 7:00 AM out at the Jason Dwelly Northwest Recreational Complex. Immediately following that, at 8:30, will be our memorial service at the Popcamper Theater, we've got a firefighter coming that was there on 9/11 in New York, will be coming to be our keynote speaker. At 12 o'clock, the Ministerial Alliance will be doing a service here at City Hall out at the, at the 9/11 memorial, and then at night, starting at 4 o'clock, a tribute to the heroes benefit concert, which will benefit the Central Florida Hope Center and Armando Borja Scholarship Foundation, will start at 4:00. Tickets available at cflhope.org backslash USA. So we'd love to, you know, have everybody come out to, you know, spend your day with us on Saturday, and we look forward to a great remembrance of those we lost on 9/11. So thank you all. What about that one we missed? Is he here?
He's not here, I did get a reply to the email that I sent, and I can read that and then decide what you'd like to do, if that's okay. Anyway, this came from Christopher Collins, who's the Vice President of Summit Real Estate Group, which is the representative for the, for this development, said, "I've been watching the stream, I'm showing 3:00 PM arrival," which of course, I think it's a couple minutes after, "I did see the questions that came up regarding limitations to the hours of operation, we did not anticipate any given the zoning and the use of the facility, we'd be concerned that we'd not be competitive with other industrial developments in the area and in the City of Apopka if we had limitations that may be inconsistent with other speculative developments. We do have, we do not have any tenants currently signed up to lease this building, and that very well may occur after its construction is complete. I'm driving in an attempt to get there as quickly as I can, again, if possible, please communicate to the council, my apologies for misunderstanding here." He thought it was an evening meeting and not a daytime meeting, so he was supposed to have come in and-
I mean, it answers the question, I mean, if, if they're not wanting to be limited by hours, that means that, conceivably, that they would operate at all hours, so, that answers my question, at least.
Okay. All right, we need to probably bring that back, so if you hadn't read that one again, just so we've, for the record.
Oh, it's a business, I'm sorry.
On your business, yeah.
I had remembered one, yeah.
I mean, just because there's an industrial classification or zoning doesn't implicitly imply that semi-trucks are part and parcel with industrial, right? And so my, my point of view is that it's right across the street from an established residential community, it's on a roadway that's going to be utilized by another very large residential community, as, by way of Avion Point to the south of it, I just, it's just a weird dynamic for semi-use in that particular area.
Okay. Let's see, go back, and so it's a major development plan, Crossroads 429 Industrial Park, so I guess, look for a motion to approve.
Are we approving it, or we postponing it? What are we doing?
Wasn't it stated that there is extra buffer built in, or there is no extra buffer?
The buffer, they extended the buffer of the building to more than, I think it's only 10 feet for the, for the side buffer, and I believe they've got about 35, 40 feet to their property line, there's a side entrance road, so, and then they also increased the, the amount of landscaping at that entrance, there's not much more you can buffer there.
Which for a sound buffer, that's the main reason for increased.
And this might be Christopher.
Did we have any complaints from any of the residents?
Pardon?
Do we have any complaints from the, in the residents?
I, any complaints or anything? Nothing, nothing other than at the planning commission, they were concerned about the development itself, but that was, it's in their backyard, so.
It was properly noticed and-
Correct.
Okay.
Just made it, I just read your email, your two emails, come on up, Christopher, introduce yourself.
Chris Collins, Vice President at Summit Real Estate Group, have been working with the team here on staff to advance to this point, and I've been trying to listen on the stream to kind of pick up on some of the conversation and be aware and try to help respond, but as I said, I misunderstood this to be an evening meeting, so.
Have you had any, any correspondence with any of the neighbors, like the neighborhood?
Nothing of note, other than we had the, you know, the meeting at the initial, where we got, you know, we opened up to everybody that would want to communicate, and, you know, I think generally those comments went along the lines of just the truck traffic, you know, that would, that would be, you know, circulating, that may not be there, you know, currently, I think that was a lot of what the conversation was about.
I know one of the bigger noise issues with truck is when they have to apply brake brakes, which really wouldn't apply here, but other than the pulling in and out, that's the concern, if it happens at all hours, and we don't even know if that's an issue, but, you know, the increased buffer of landscaping does help with that, so.
Right, right.
And you're already intending to do that.
That's correct, that's correct, there's a pretty dense barrier really around the entire development, but also, you know, the access corridors and things along those lines, it's densely landscaped and, you know, view corridors and things like that, we've tried to address as best as we can in that manner.
So when you had the community meeting, how many residents do you feel came out from that community?
I, I can't, off the top of my head, I honestly can't remember the exact number. I recall, you know, maybe a handful that spoke, but it wasn't, it wasn't an extremely long meeting, let's, let's put it that way, just some very general.
So you feel that when they left the meeting, that they were satisfied with what you had been, you're planning to do in order to kind of minimize the noise for them?
Yes, ma'am, I, I think so, you know, the upshot was that we would proceed through the processes from there, we hadn't gotten extremely far in, in the design process at that point, but we did have a site plan that largely looks like what we have right now, and again, have gone through, you know, those measures to, to include barriers and address sightlines and things along those lines.
And there's things in place to prevent contamination to the lake that's there, since this is gonna be an industrial site?
That's correct, I mean, we're going through all of those processes with the Stormwater Management District, there are wetlands as well on the site, and we're addressing those with the Water Management District as well as DEP, to the extent that they're, you know, to the extent that they're interested in the, in the wetlands that are on the site, so we're actively engaged in those processes right now as well.
Okay. Okay. All right, looking for-
So moved.
Got a motion to approve the major development plan for Crossroads 429 Industrial Park by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bankson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Got four for it and one against it, Commissioner Becker. With that, we will close.